I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission to order. Ms. Antonucci, if we have a roll call, please.
Mayor Sagata, Mayor Pro-Tim Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Present.
Commissioner Honeyfield.
Here.
I miss Commissioner Schuster.
Yeah, sorry. Will you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024, at 6:00 PM here in the commission chambers. We have a few proclamations to read this evening. First, we have the National Telecommunicators Week, April 14th through the 20th, 2024. Commissioner Honeyfield.
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of emergency services is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the City of Raton Dispatch Center, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas the City of Raton telecommunicators have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now, therefore, do I, Mayor Honeyfield, on behalf of James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim the week of April 14th through the 20th, 2024, as Telecommunicators Week. In the City of Raton, in honor of our telecommunicators, whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe and witness thereof, whereof, I have unto set my hand and seal and cause the seal of the City of Raton to be affixed this ninth day of April 24.
Thank you. Thank you. Very much appreciate what that team does for us. Next, our next proclamation is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2024. Whereas April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, CAPM, it is a time to highlight the importance of families and communities working together to prevent child abuse and neglect. And whereas children are vital to our city's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets. And whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community, and whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting, and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children to ensure all children grow to their full potential. And whereas the City of Raton and Youth Heartline partner together to provide preventative services to the children and the families of Raton, now, therefore, does James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, hereby proclaim the week of April 7th through the 13th, 2024, as Youth Heartline Child Abuse Prevention Week, and urge all citizens in the City of Raton to participate in the following three events to promote family connection, build the community, and prevent child abuse. Show your blue day, wear blue to show your support on April 10th tomorrow. Family movie night, bring your family to watch The Goonies at the Schuler Theater on April 10th, which is also tomorrow. And show your blue dance party, bring your family to connect and have fun at the Raton Convention Center from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM on April 12th. And witness thereof, James Neil Sagata Jr. has set his hand and seal and caused the seal of the City of Raton to be affixed this ninth day of April 2024. You guys have a great day. Thank you.
We're all here. And we're all kind of wearing too.
Yes, you guys, I should have worn my little... Oh, my gosh, I was saving it for tomorrow. Darn it. Thank you all. Thank you for the meeting.
Oh, is this on, or do I have to talk into it? Okay. Thank you very much for this recognition, and also, we really appreciate the support of the City of Raton for our socio-emotional groups. We have now served over 300 students in the intermediate and high school from 4th to 10th grade, just the school year alone, and we all laid start. So, we're excited to serve more next year, and hopefully, we'll get it again. So, thank you for that support, and also, all that Raton does to support our efforts to protect children in your community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next proclamation is National Library Week, April 7th through the 13th, 2024. Commissioner Duckman.
Whereas libraries offer the opportunity for everyone to connect with others, learn some skills, and pursue their passions, no matter where they are in life's journey. And whereas libraries have long served a trusted institution striving to ensure equity, access to information and services for all members of the community, regardless of very separate ability and socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of the community, developing and expanding collections, programs, and services that are diverse, that population may serve, and whereas libraries are accessible and to these places that promote a good sense of what we can make, and that's in understanding, also civic engagement, and shared community goals. And whereas libraries are treasured institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge of safeguarding both physical and digital resources for present and future generations. And whereas libraries are an essential, probably good, and fundamental institution in working to improve society, protecting the right to education and literacy, and promote the free exchange of information that is for all. And whereas libraries and librarians and library workers are joining, library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Therefore, does James Neil Sagata, Mayor of Raton, does give very, April 7th and 13th, 2014, National Library Week, and to encourage all citizens to revisit their libraries and celebrate the adventures and opportunities they unlock for us every day. And witness thereof, does James Neil Sagata set his hand and seal and causes the seal of the City of Raton to be affixed this ninth day of April. Thanks, James Neil Sagata, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And if you're here for proclamation or something, feel free to leave. We don't trap you here. Anytime. You will not offend us at all, but we'd love for you to stay anyway. Next, we have the introduction of new employees. Mr. Mestas.
Yes, we have two new police officers, Jordan Jim and Zachary Cox. If I can get Deputy Chief to come forward and do the introductions.
Commissioners, Mayor Pro-Tim, Manager, Treasurer. Ladies and gentlemen of the gallery, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce our two newest hires to the Raton Police Department. First officer is Jordan Jim, who comes to us from the Springer Police Department with over six months of experience. And the second hire is Zachary Cox, who comes to us from Illinois with over five years of experience. These are the two newest additions to the Raton Police Department.
Welcome.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the opportunity to introduce the two newest hires.
Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Next, we'll move on to items from citizens present. We ask that you keep your remarks concise, and if it is something related to an item on the agenda, that you wait until that time. So, we'll open this up for items from citizens present. Please state your name.
My name is Carla K. Morton, citizen of Raton, Texas, poet laureate. I come in gratitude. I, two weeks ago, took a trip out to Virginia, West Virginia, Lewis National Park. Kansas nearly killed us, myself and fellow Texas poet laureate Alan Berkelback, also a citizen of Raton. I storm out, windstorm back, weeks on the road. It was terrible. But, so we decided to take the Cimarrone, the dry route on the Santa Fe Trail back, because we're working on a Santa Fe Trail project, but that's neither here nor there. So, we're coming down, and it's dark, and we get to Clayton, and we turn north. So, we're coming up, and it's dark, and we've been on the road for days, for 11 hours a day, and we get past that turn, and you know, I think it's about eight miles out. And there, with that little glitter of Raton and the city lights, my surprise to see the star in red Raton. And I can't tell you the joy and pride of place and hope that it brings to not just myself, but all the citizens. I can't think of anything that the commissioners could have done or the City of Raton could do besides an amazing Christmas display, but it's something that brings everybody together. And, you know, stars, like angels, they do God's bidding. And when we look up and we see the star at night, it's like a guardian angel over the town. So, just on behalf of all of the citizens, thank you so much for the star. And I like the blue, and I know it's a reason that it's blue. It doesn't matter the color, but we always know we're home beneath the star in red Raton. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Madam Mayor Pro-Tim, I've noticed they left out the approval of the prior meeting minutes.
That will be under Action Items next. Okay, and we will move on to that right now. All right, we'll move on to Item 7, Action Items. Item A, Delivering an Act on the Approval of the March 26th, 2024, Regular Meeting Minutes. Are there any corrections or comments on the minutes? If not, then they will stand approved as presented. Item B, Public Hearing, City of Raton Fiscal Year 25 Interim Budget. Mr. Mestas.
Mayor Pro-Tim and Commission, I surrender my introduction to the City Treasurer, Michaela Antonucci, who will discuss the framework for this year's upcoming budget.
Good evening, Mayor Pro-Tim and Commission. As we discussed at the previous meeting, I did present you with the memo from the Department of Finance, which kind of lays the framework and is our guidance that we must follow to adopt an interim budget, which will be due by June 1st, and so, we'll start that process now. And then, we'll close out the fiscal year, and then, we'll carry forward our ending cash balances and prepare the final budget for submission by July 31st. So, we're in the beginning stages of gathering the information. And then, tonight, we'll open it up also to public comment. And then, that way, I can try to incorporate all of the information that I gather from our department heads and the public, and then, any commission input into a workable draft that we would hope to have for you at a future meeting. We also, in discussion today, we kind of decided that it might be good if we held a budget workshop, maybe like at 5:00 prior to a commission meeting, so that it would depend on if everybody's available or not. But we might potentially be looking at 5:00 on April 23rd. And then, we would invite our department heads to also be present at that to give a brief presentation. If that meeting doesn't work, we could look at the May 14th.
It's senior night for baseball. It'd be hard.
Oh.
Yeah, it's kind of a big deal, it's our last home game.
That's the April 23rd?
Yeah, the night for next week.
But I mean, we certainly could have a standalone budget workshop outside of our regular meeting night. I mean, we're open to any suggestions, but we would definitely want to check with Mayor Sagata and also Commissioner Schuster as well. So, we'll be reaching out to you to set that date. But that would be kind of our suggestion, maybe to try to hold something prior to a meeting or a standalone. Do you have any input or suggestions?
I'm fine with the 29th, if that'll work for everybody else.
So, we'll discuss that a little bit further.
You would prefer this sooner than later, I'm assuming.
Well, like we said, the next commission meeting is April 23rd. I don't know if I'll have a workable draft by then. What I will be doing, starting tomorrow, is distributing budget worksheets to each of the department heads. I'll give them about a week to work on that. The City Manager, and I'll kind of meet with the department heads as part of the gathering of information process. And then, I'll prepare the, since roughly 75% or more of the general fund budget is salaries and benefits, I'll need to prepare those schedules and incorporate all of that into the budget as well. So, that's kind of where we're at in our process. But we do want to have those individual meetings with department heads, because they know best how to run their departments. And we can kind of put together a list of mainly, we call it the wish list, but, you know, capital improvements or equipment needs. Put all of that together for the commission. So, you'll recall, last year, we kind of had approved to dip into our reserves to meet some of those one-time capital improvement needs. And the commission may desire to do that again this year. We can certainly do that with reserves. We can't really budget anything that would be a recurring expenditure, but if we had, like we've done in the past with vehicles and other public works equipment, one time.
Ambulance, some different airborne projects.
So, like I said, through our discussions with the department heads, we'll kind of gather that information to present to you kind of a list of what the needs are going to be.
It would be challenging for me to do it before the next commission meeting. But we do have the 30th at the end of the month, where we're in an off night. I don't know if that might be a potential.
Okay, so, we'll look at the calendar. You know, May 14th would be the first meeting in May. I would like to have a workable draft by that meeting. We could certainly have as many budget workshops as we need. But by the second meeting in May, I would have to present to you the final interim budget for approval.
Thank you, Michaela. Any comments or questions for Michaela? Comments about the budget at this point? This is a public hearing. If anybody would like to get input on the city budget or has an idea, you're welcome to speak at this time.
Hi, I'm Lauren Brewer, and I have a little letter here that I wrote very quickly before I came to the meeting tonight, because I almost forgot. So, I'm going to just pass the show to you, and I'll leave copies for Lyndia and Kayla Sagata as well. So, you can read along with me if you'd like, because I'm just going to read it, because I can't remember everything that I've written. Okay, so, Dear Raton City Commissioners, Quality of life is an extremely important aspect of why people move to and live in certain communities. Having a safe, clean environment to live in is something that we should all enjoy. But in Raton, loose dogs roaming the streets can be seen throughout town almost daily. I know several people who have been attacked by dogs, which is totally unacceptable. With the small staff we have, there is not always someone on hand at the animal shelter to answer the calls, care for the animals and the grounds, and try to find owners or a home for strays. The shelter is often at capacity, and there is no room to put any strays that might be picked up, so they just aren't picked up. I would suggest that we budget enough money to hire one more full-time animal control officer and one more part-time officer that would allow a new procedure to be instituted that could help alleviate the overcrowding and the need to pick up and hold additional dogs. I mention dogs only here, because generally, the animal control officer does not pick up stray cats, maybe kittens and mamas, but not stray cats. My suggestion would be that when a dog is picked up, the officer finds out who and where the owner is, contact the owner to bring the dog back, and to caution them about the city ordinance that requires all dogs be kept on their own property. A citation could be written and a pamphlet or paper given that provides the city ordinance and suggestions on providing shelter, water, food, and places for help if needed. No fine would be issued with the first offense, but if it occurs again, then monetary fines will be levied. I had personal experience with that procedure when I lived in a large city suburb before moving to Raton. I had a dog that was an escape artist and was picked up by the animal control officer several times, so often that he knew me and my dog by name. Since he knew me, and this was in a large city, let me tell you. Since he knew me, he brought Snuffy to our home and gave us a ticket for $50 each time we paid by mail. After a couple of times of paying that fine, we put chicken wire at the bottom of the cedar fence in our backyard and dug it down about a foot, which finally stopped him from chewing and digging his way out. But he did occasionally run out the front door when we opened it without looking to see if he was ready to bolt. Keeping strays off the streets and providing a little community education would add equality to our lives that many responsible dog owners would very much appreciate. And I have to tell you that when we first moved to Raton, I still had that dog. He was very old by then. He was blind. He'd been crippled, because he'd been hit by a car once while running the streets. But he was still alive, and he escaped again. And being new to the town, I didn't know animal shelter. I didn't know who to call. We just got in our vehicles and started looking for him. Well, then, I finally did call the animal shelter, because I asked somebody about that, and they gave me the number, and I called, and that's where he was. So, I got a fine, or I actually got a ticket, had to go before the municipal judge for a dog at large, a dangerous dog at large. So, I went in and argued with the judge, because you know me, I could do that, and told him, "This is not a dog at large, because he is not dangerous," for one thing. He was old, he was crippled, he was blind. But I paid the fine anyway, because I knew that it was going to the animal shelter or the Humane Society. So, he was still an escape artist, even at that advanced age. So, I would like to suggest, too, that, you know, if you look at possibly hiring additional staff for the animal control shelter there, and I know that it's in the works possibly to enlarge the shelter and have a better facility, but we still need additional staff, because then, we could have someone at that shelter at all times to answer the phones. There's been many times when I've called, and there's no one there to answer the phone. So, I've called dispatch, and they have then gotten a message to someone. And usually, I'm calling because I see a stray dog running the streets. And I'm afraid for them, that they're going to get hit or killed, or that they're going to hurt someone else or another animal. So, I would suggest that you at least consider putting in additional staffing for our animal control shelter, because I think that would certainly add to our quality of life here and everyone's feeling of being safe and having a clean environment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any comments or questions for Mr.? Anyone else wishing to comment on the budget, have budget input? Seeing no one, we will move on to Item C, Delivering an Act on Public Celebration Permit for Blue Dragonfly Brewing LLC for the Schuler Theater, April 17th, 2024. Mr. Mestas?
Mayor Pro-Tim and Commission, Colin Tony of Blue, excuse me, Blue Dragonfly Brewing Limited Liability Corporation is holding an event at the Schuler Theater on April 17th. They would like to serve liquor. The entertainment that night is the Queen Bee's Band, which is an all-female rock band, where Raton is their first stop on their Texas tour. And in the packet here, we have the application, the names of the server, and all the supporting documents that we need to review.
Thank you. Everything looks to be in order. Any comments from the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve the public celebration permit for Blue Dragonfly Brewing LLC for the Schuler Theater, April 17th, 2024.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for Item C, the Public Celebration Permit for Blue Dragonfly Brewing. Any further discretion? All in favor, please vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D, Delivering an Act on Grant Agreement Between the City of Raton and the State of New Mexico Department of Cultural Affairs Fund 89200 Appropriation Project for the Arthur Johnson Memorial Library. Mr. Mestas?
Mayor Pro-Tim and Commission, this is a grant from the New Mexico State, from the State of New Mexico, from a $6 million fund, where we are going to receive just shy of $30,000 over the two years to spend on anything pretty much associated with the library, except salaries. Would you like to add anything, Denny?
It could be for, everything except salaries or anything for staff. Anything that is used for patrons is viable, like if we wanted to buy new whiting or new chairs, that would be covered.
Anything for patrons is covered, not for staff.
Nothing for staff.
Thank you so much. Any further comments or questions from the commission?
Any inclination as to what your needs would be with this?
Currently, we're thinking about increasing our maker space. We right now have 3D printers and drafting tablets, and we want to include engravers and stuff of that nature for public use, so that they can start small businesses and probably just do stuff to promote our businesses here, too.
Any further comments or questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the grant agreement between the City of Raton and the State of New Mexico Department of Cultural Affairs Fund 89200 Appreciation Project for the Arthur Johnson Memorial Library.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? All right, all in favor, please vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item E, Delivering an Act on Park Hill Proposal for 2024 Landfill Environmental Monitoring Services Contract. Mr. Mestas?
Mayor Pro-Tim and Commission, at this time, I will surrender my introduction to the Director of Public Works, Mr. Jason Phillips, who will discuss this extension, exercise of an option here, correct?
Let's see, we have, first up, we have Park Hill.
Yes.
Is that correct? So, the Park Hill proposal is our groundwater monitoring. As you all know, with the closing of the Raton landfill, we enter a 30-year cycle window of groundwater monitoring and post-closure activities. Previous year, we were, we awarded a proposal to Park Hill for $30,000. This year's request is actually more than that. We are looking at a $34,100-plus NMGRT proposal. And the reason for that is in year five of groundwater analysis, there are different triggers each year you do groundwater monitoring. So, at certain intervals, they ask you... So at certain intervals, they ask you to do a different sampling routine, more constituents, and more frequency. So this year's proposal is more expensive. Park Hill was previously goring environmental. They've been doing engineering services related to the Raton landfill going back to 2005 or greater. We have been happy with their work so far. It's unfortunately that we have to bear these expenses, but it's part of the post-closure plan. So with that regard, I would recommend awarding this proposal to Park Hill for the $34,100-plus tax, but would gladly stand for any questions if anyone has them.
How many wells are there?
We have four monitoring wells and we have a two-monitoring event year and year five, so they'd sample those two wells two times and do an extended constituency.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions for the commission?
Make a motion to approve Park Hill for 2024 Landfill Environmental Monitoring Service Contract.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Ince, we have a roll call. What would you like?
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chatterley?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. What do you say?
We'll move on to item F, Delivering an Act on Engineering Analytics First Annual Renewal of Consulting Services Agreement. Mr. Mestes?
Yet again, this is an extension, exercise of a contract option, and I will defer my comments to our Director of Public Works, Mr. Jason Phillips.
Mayor Protem and Commission, last year at this time, we did a qualification-based proposal selection process in which Engineering Analytics was awarded the on-call engineering services for generally civil-related engineering services provided to the city of Raton. We have reached the juncture where we would have the first of what could be up to three annual renewals of this contract before going out to RFP. We have been satisfied with the services provided by Engineering Analytics. The fact that they're a local firm makes them more responsive to my needs in a shorter timeframe, so I would recommend that we extend that contract for one additional year by mutual consent of Engineering Analytics, but would gladly stand for any questions if anyone has them.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Phillips?
I will abstain on this just because my son has a job there this summer and I don't want to, will that be acceptable or do we need to have three of us?
Yeah, I don't think we could vote without three.
I thought it was my understanding that-
Yeah, I guess we could.
Half plus half is two would be-
Yeah, two would be a majority, so, but if we had a tie, that would be a problem, so.
Let's make this interesting.
I mean, I could, but it's not money touching me.
No, that's fine. We can note, note for the record that you abstained.
I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Engineering Analytics First Annual Renewal Call to the Service Agreement. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? All in favor, please vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries with two votes and one abstention. Item G, Delivering an Act of Resolution 2024-23 Participation in the New Mexico Department of Transportation TPF Funds for SAD 18 Project. I'm assuming this is for Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Protem and Commission, the next two agenda items deal with grant applications proposed for the New Mexico Department of Transportation Transportation Project Fund, which is a relatively new bucket of money that the legislature have set aside for local governments to apply for larger-scale projects. And the benefit of this is NMDOT projects usually require a 25% match. TPF projects only require a 5% match. So the subject of this resolution is what we jokingly refer to as SAD 18, which is a special improvement district, 18th Street. And the history of special improvement district 18 is, in the large assessment district created at SAD 18, as a cost-cutting measure, base course was removed from the project and pavement was placed directly on native soils. Unfortunately, that was not wise and most of these roads have begun failing. SAD 18 project in this form is looking to repair three of probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 streets. To do that would require removing what's left of the existing asphalt surface, sub-excavating, and then putting base course and additionally reinstalling asphalt. The cost of this application is $1.2 million and it would be just for three of the streets. So we'd be looking to do this probably every year for the rest of my career would come with an SAD-type project. As part of the larger discussion, the next project on this list is a South Second Street resolution to repair curb, gutter, additional street work on the roadway prism, wheelchair ramps, radiuses. And as you all know, South Second Street is not a City of Raton street. We just have a road usage agreement, but it's been a long time since Second Street was constructed in the 90s. A lot of these problems were prevalent early in the project, and our agreement with DOT is a maintenance agreement. We will plow snow, we'll do snow removal, light crack work, RPS replaces the lighting, but any construction defect should fall in DOT's court. But it is the most prominent street in Raton, so what happens when we get to the TPF ranking and rating is, at some point, I've already been told there's 34 pre-applications filed for a total of $8 million. It's half of the amount of funding available last round. We have been successful three times in this, the Shagreek Project, the Front Road Project, and the Citywide Chip Seal, but our expectation is we would be very fortunate to get one, highly unlikely to get two. So if it was left to my devices when they asked what the priority would be between the two projects, the South Second Street project would be my priority, but I would also entertain any input from you all when that question is invariably asked, which of the two would we prefer, you know? But the passing of these two resolutions allows me to proceed forward with these grant requests. What ultimately happens from here is I prepare presentations, we go to the Northeastern Regional Transportation Planning Organization, I make my pitch for my two projects, they rank and rate them by all members present, and then ultimately they'll go to the DOT District Four and the Highway Commission for final approval, where they have a chance to reorganize like last year. We tied for first with the South Second Street project, yet did not get funded. And probably as a result of having three projects already in the queue, they do look for some equality amongst the district and we've been the most fortunate of all. But I would recommend passing both Resolution 2023 and 2024 to proceed ahead and would gladly answer any questions on either or both of those projects.
Thank you.
So this million-two covers three streets, not South Second?
No.
And the second one is South Second?
The second one is South Second, and it's slightly smaller amounts, but it's more concrete work with some minor street rehabilitation, whereas the others are full-blown reconstruction.
In the three streets you have in mind?
They are Tournesa, Hogan, and Arnold Street.
Is this, so if we got the grant and it was for the Second Street project with that fix, would we be able to fix the speed bumps that are driving us all crazy?
To be honest with you, it would moderately approve it. The speed bumps are the result of a sleeper slab condition where concrete and asphalt generally meet, and Second Street in today's dollars would probably be a $25 million project for its complete construction. This is really just minor rehabilitation, even though a million dollars sounds like a lot. It's, when curb and gutter is $60, $65 linear foot, it's the radiuses at Grant Avenue, the heaved concrete sections, you know, the section of the median that's heaved and missing at the south underpass would be in play, but not necessarily the connection to the sleeper slabs and the underlying cause of that condition. In addition to this project, we should begrudgingly begin lobbying for reconstruction of South Second Street, but I will tell you that its original reconstruction was one of the most difficult times in the city of Raton and highly contentious project. The blessing when it's done, a curse while you're in construction, and really tough on local businesses. So this is kind of a bridge project to get us to that point, but somewhere within the next decade, I mean, we're due for reconstruction.
Thank you, Jason. Any other questions or comments?
Your recommendation would be to approve GMH?
I would recommend approve GMH and to have your blessing to prioritize the South Second Street. I mean, really, the thought behind the SAD 18 project was, if money was that prevalent, we don't really have a good way to go on these SAD 18 streets. And within our funding mechanisms, we're going to have a tough time getting there. But it starts to knock a few off the list. These streets are long, but they're residential, non-articular streets. On the scheme of things where they fall, I mean, Arnold, Tournesa, they both have lateral cracks that you hit every 10 feet in. And some of it is just an exercise of figuring out what'll actually work to take to the next 17 streets in the project, but bang for your buck wise, Second Street has multiple times the traffic volume of any of these other streets.
I think that's a good point. I'm comfortable with prioritizing Second Street. I think that hits a lot more of our population.
And in the meantime, I mean, we will do everything we can to keep the rest, these three streets are a small portion of the problem. Throughout the east side, East Seventh Street, I mean, we have SAD 18 streets that are shorter and problematic, and some of them you can get by with chip seal on, some had better native soils. If you add a higher clay content, which it looks like some of these streets in the country club have, they've had a different type of failure. Some of these streets we've gone by with chip sealing because the surface, subsurface hasn't failed, but by and large, I mean, we know, we have close to a quarter billion dollars in street needs probably over the next 20 years. They're both a drop in the ocean towards what we ultimately have to do, but-
The only thing I see is, to your point, especially east side, Springtown, there's some of those streets, they won't last another five years.
No, they're, we, SAD 18 streets are going to be a problem, and unfortunately, despite my best efforts to get free money, ultimately what other cities do is they reassess, you know, and you assign a property value, dollar amount to everyone that lives on them, and it's, it's a tough burden on those folks. And the difference between like, say, I believe my house was probably in special assessment district 16, 17, they were well-constructed, so Fifth Street, we were assessed, my grandfather was actually assessed, and it's still a functioning street, but that decision to remove base course, if there was a time machine, would have been one of those decisions. And I mean, this is a decision that was made, I mean, I was probably eight years old. It's not a recent decision by the city commission, and it was a budgetary decision, but in my mind, you'd have been better off putting curb and gutter in graveling roads than omitting base course from them. No one asked young Jason at the time how to build a street.
We should probably take each of these separately. Let's separate them, do G separately and H just because that's what they're all mentioning.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-24 Participation in the New Mexico Department of Transportation's TPF Funds for SAD 18 Project.
I have a motion and a second for item G. Any further comments from the commission? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item H, we've already discussed.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-24 Participation in the New Mexico Department of Transportation's TPF Fund for the South Second Street Project.
I have a motion and a second for item H, Resolution 2024-24. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item I, Delivering an Act of Resolution 2024-25 New Mexico Clean and Beautiful Grant Application. Not you.
Part of this one.
I have a question for Jason.
Sure.
Jason, I have a question for you. I know that I have visited the transfer station recycling center lately, just recently, and they, you have lots of cement rocks and things that I understand you crush and then use in the alleys of Raton. Is that correct?
Eventually, yes.
Eventually, okay. So I was just wondering, how is it prioritized? Which alleys are done?
We do an assessment of the alleys, put it where it's most needed, but in order to get an economy of scale worth mobilizing, a crushing contractor, we have to have significantly more concrete than we have now. So I wouldn't be proposing that anytime soon.
It looked like a lot of concrete.
Yeah, no, we're probably not a tenth of the volume of last time we crushed it.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your time.
I have a question for him. Last meeting, I talked to him in the hall. My name is Douglas, as everybody knows. Tinaha, I've been there for 21 years. We bought this trailer, it was brought up from Fred Duran, in the domestic violence Phillips, and that Tinaha is bad, it's bad. I asked you if you probably can jock at it, come jock at with me?
No, I've looked at it, yeah, and you've requested it be closed, and I'm probably not going that route.
Because of traffic, the traffic is just heavy, it's deteriorated, it's not even worth fixing. And you said you probably can't get it for, what, a year or two, you said, maybe?
No, no. I mean, we'll do my-
Come on, guys, you know, I need some-
So, Mr. Bustos, that's a great comment, we'll take that into consideration and we'll save that for public comment.
Okay, we could do that next meeting. I'll bring you up.
Thank you.
We talked about it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item I, as I said. Mr. Mestes?
Yes, Mayor Protem and Commission, I would like to surrender my time to our Director of Community and Economic Development, Ms. Malina Hein, who will discuss the particulars of this agreement. But before she speaks, I would like to say that there was a short fuse on this grant, which caused this, I authorized them to submit this grant because the deadline was last Friday, so we're doing this a little bit backwards, but that was my call as city manager.
Malina.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, Commission, thank you. The New Mexico Clean and Beautiful Grant is through New Mexico True, the Department of Tourism, and it's basically to promote anti-littering and to make a very beautiful place for people to visit throughout the state. It was part of the Keep New Mexico Beautiful program, but I think that that has since, possibly since COVID, merged into New Mexico True, which is our state's tourism program. We've applied for the grant for a total amount of $29,000 in grant funding for a dog rest area at the visitor's center, a small dog park for people to let their pets out and use, you know, use the facilities, so to speak, and have a little bit of exercise before they get back on the road, as well as some anti-littering signage that we will place at high-touch-point areas in Raton, parks, visitor's center, library, you know, just some general, you know, anti-littering signage, but also some signage that creates some community pride and pride in keeping our city beautiful and clean. The city would have a match for this grant of $7,250, and that would be a combination of in-kind services and non-promotional funds from lodgers' tax. We're going to be able to kind of leverage both of those to accomplish the project should we receive the grant.
Thank you for that explanation. Any questions for Ms. Hein?
I'll make a motion, I guess, make a motion to approve Resolution 24-25 NM Clean and Beautiful Grant Application. Second.
I have a motion and a second for item I, Resolution 2024-25 New Mexico Clean and Beautiful Grant Application, which includes an amount of $29,000 with the City of Raton pledging local funds in the amount of $7,250, which is a contribution, a combination of in-kind and non-promotional funds from lodgers' tax. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Item J, Delivering an Act on Amendment Number One, Direct Use Services J-JAC Subcontract Agreement Between the City of Raton and Upart. Mr. Mestes?
Mayor Protem and Commission, I will surrender my time here to the city treasurer, Michael Ann Antonucci, regarding this subcontract amendment and-
Mayor Protem and Commission, at a previous commission meeting, we did bring to you a budget adjustment. It was $4,400- a budget adjustment. It was $4,455. This is just kind of a procedural issue, since we do have a formal subcontract with Youth Heartline. We now bring to you Amendment Number One to their contract, just so that we could adjust the amounts because of that budget adjustment. So, you'll see, we would amend section number one to reduce the girls' circle line item to the 72,930, and then the boys' council would increase to the 37,455. Are there any questions? If not, I would recommend approval of this amendment.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve Amendment Number One, Direct Youth Services JJAC Subcontract Agreement Between the City of Raton and Youth Heartline.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? All in favor, please vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item K, City Manager Report. Mr. Mestes?
Bottom line up front, once again, the city staff has been working in high gear to get our hands on outside grants from everything from funding for recreation to funding for broadband. We're also involved with a number of community events this week, the town hall sponsored by Grow Raton, and the county mental health brunch sponsored by Colfax County Health Council. We received a major shipment of eight pallets of equipment for Al Raton Media Works and the film school, so we're happy to report the progress in that area. With regard to the Big Rocks, treasurer, the city of Raton now has an approved final audit. The audit approval letter was dated 4/4/2024 and states that the audit report does not become a public record until five days after the date of the release. Today would be day five, so it should be available on their website starting tomorrow. The treasurer is arranging for the auditors to present at the May 14th commission meeting, and we can post a notice of potential quorum for RPS and Raton Waterworks Board to attend that meeting. With the police, the police are now in full swing preparing for their transition from our antiquated analog system to VoIP. Fire department continues to outfit and train on the new vehicles. Public Works, a lot of work has been accomplished on our athletic fields, and they're pushing really hard to be ready by our opening day. Engineering is focusing efforts on carney school, and we have met with the engineers to look at ways to expedite the plans. Facilities, we have worked a solution for the elevator over to the library where we should start the repairs soon. With the clerk, is setting up a city employee meeting on May 29th, and we will have more details to follow. Economic development, our director of economic development is working closely with the state broadband office and ties from Better Cities on a grant that we hope we will know the outcome by the next meeting. In mention in dispatches, this week, I would like to shout out to Mr. Leonard Zamora. I've run into Leonard hundreds of times where he is out doing maintenance or cleaning sidewalks or moving mountains. I've come to think of Leonard as the hardest-working man in show business, this time literally. This week, Leonard, like many times before, was busy securing the film school equipment in a safe location. Along with Jaden Welch, they unloaded eight pallets of equipment into a room that had the capacity for 10 and was already holding 14. Eight more slid right in, and like some sort of Tetris master, he would not let the boxes rule him. But Leonard has impressed me multiple times from getting new carpet to, for city hall, to getting new furniture for municipal court. Finally, some closing thoughts. My better half mayor has been reading a book about the Schuler Theater, and apparently, at one time, they had curtains in the theater that were embroidered with sayings to boost the public spirits. Here's what the curtain said: "Improvement in enterprise lead to greater things. The caliber of our city's people is expressed by its public improvements. The appearance of a city is its chief asset. Make Raton a better place to live in. Raton is city mile-high. In union their strength, let us pull together. Boost for a greater Raton." These were around 1915, about 109 years ago. That's good advice then, and good advice now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Very interesting. Any further comments from the commission? Commissioner Hennig?
Yeah.
I have no comments either, except to encourage everyone to wear blue tomorrow for our child abuse awareness. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.